Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a master plan update and master plan committee organization. We'll ask Mrs. Latrell to give us, begin that discussion. Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the community visioning forum for the master plan committee is going to be held on November 7th at the Trotter or Middle School. It's from 6:30 to 8:30, I believe, is the perfect, as the graphic shows. The next thing I wanted to discuss was we had our last master plan committee meeting last week, and unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't meet, which meant that we couldn't have a booth at Heritage Day because we never had a chance to discuss it as a committee. So I was hoping that we could do a little reorganization of the committee to help relieve some of the quorum pressure. We currently have to meet a quorum of 11 before we can have a meeting, and that's a high bar. So I was hoping, we have one open at-large position, I was hoping that the board would agree that we could eliminate that, and then turn two seats from regular members to ex-officios. And that would be for the Historical Commission. And I contacted the member from Historical Commission, and she's okay with that. And the next would be the Zoning Board of Appeals. I did reach out to him, I haven't heard from him on that, but I haven't heard from him since he was appointed either. So I was hoping that the board would agree to those two requests, then we could get the quorum from 11 to 8, which would be much easier to reach.
Anything else on that?
No, we're meeting on the 23rd, and only a couple people told me they weren't coming, so I'm expecting a robust attendance at that meeting, which we have to have because we have to plan our community visioning forum.
Mr. Mills?
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reduce the requirement for the quorum. All in favor? Five to zero. Anything else on that, on the master plan? Thank you. We can't have that update without complimenting you, Mrs. Latrell, on the hard work and the time that you're putting into it. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the public, continued public hearing. 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, major site plan approval. This has been continued since, from September 9th and September 23rd. And also the public hearing, St. Mark's, 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, lower impact development. That public hearing is also continued from September 9th and September 23rd. We'll ask the town planner to discuss any updates, or actually, the updates that we've received since September 23rd, and the current status of the submittal. Karina?
All right. Since the last meeting on September 23rd, the applicants' team engineer, Whitman and Bingham, and I met with the DPW to respond to the planning board's request to determine whether the drainage on the school street entrance could accommodate the changes that the project is proposing. And we had good discussion. We searched for plans that would have evidence of some information there. I did, Karen Galligan did as well, and I believe Karen responded to Brian at Whitman and Bingham. I'm not sure she provided you with a memo yet?
We have not seen a memo yet.
Okay. And then you were going to do some additional survey investigation in that territory. Have you done that yet?
We are under process of St. Mark's School. We discovered there was a couple of manholes that were actually buried underneath some landscaping and some site improvements, so St. Mark's and the facilities group is going to, they are going to uncover those, and then the surveyor's going to go back out and locate those. And so when I get to the letter that we provided with the board, there's that, one outstanding issue from the Fussin O'Neill letter is that volume increase. And so we need some of that additional information in order to complete those calculations. So we are under, doing our due diligence, we're working on that part of the plan.
Right, from both sides. So we're, we've been searching for data, and the engineers are going to do some more investigation in the field to answer that. Then on October 1st, we received a supplemental, or a partial set of revised plans, which included the landscaping plans, which were distributed to the planning board members, also a waiver request letter, a formal one. We did submit that to Fussin O'Neill, but told them to hold off to review that until we get the full submission, so they're not looking at everything three times for you. That information also was distributed to the town departments. I received no comments back at this point, except for Open Space Preservation Commission. I received an email this afternoon regarding Freddie Gillespie, the chair. She's unable to attend this evening's meeting. The timing was off for her to schedule an Open Space Preservation Commission meeting prior to tonight. Therefore, she doesn't have the information to comment from the Open Space Preservation Commission, but as an individual who's familiar with the standard recommendations of the Commission. She said she had the pleasure of meeting with St. Mark's Director of Facilities, Sandra Duran, and Sonia Byherc? Behack, that's it. Horticulture and ground supervisor to discuss the use of native plants at St. Mark's, not only for landscaping, but as part of a future student enrichment programs, including the valuable service the Open Space Preservation Commission can provide by bringing Dr. Robert Geger's bumblebee research to the campus, including helping to improve native pollination services for the apple orchard, among other science projects. She says, "We did not discuss the landscape plans for the orchards specifically, as the newest one hadn't been received at the time of our meeting. The plans are greatly improved since the first submittal, but there are still opportunities for improvement. We were grateful for the meadow, but after the last meeting, expected future plans to include all natives and no cultivars, except in very few cases. We heard concerns regarding student safety with tall shrubs, but that can be addressed using different native shrub, and would hope we could meet to discuss this and the other non-native included in the current plan with the landscape architect before the next set of plans is submitted." So I just got this email, and I can forward it to you tomorrow. And that brings us to tonight, and I think, as opposed to not submitting anything, you wanted to present what you had already updated.
Yeah, and whatever that she would like to do. We, so we basically have two items. We put together a waiver letter, pretty much just pulling out some of the information from Fussin O'Neill's original review, and kind of putting it in one document. The discussion that we would like to have tonight would maybe go through those waivers, and get the feel of the board. Once we start putting the final touches on the plan, making sure that we either cover those items or know that the waiver may be granted. I know it's typically weighted till kind of the end of the progress, the process, however, just for us to kind of get some of that input now, and then Andrew can kind of go over some of those changes, if you guys have had a chance to look at some of the plants. And also, the change to the parking lot was incorporated into some of that. We could briefly go over that, and then look to continue this to another meeting, where we would have all that information for Fussin O'Neill.
So take us through the waiver letter?
Correct.
And then, and then take us through the revised plan.
Yep, perfect. So I did bring some extra copies. I know they were submitted, everybody have. It's a letter dated October 11th.
That's from Whitman and Bingham Associates?
Correct.
October 11th.
Yep.
We all have that. So take us through it.
Perfect. So the first two waivers have to do from Section 174.8, which is a Schedule of Use Regulations. We talked about it at the beginning of the process, the building height, which the proposed building height does exceed the maximum allowable in a floor area ratio calculation. And Fussin O'Neill had pointed out that the current floor area ratio appears to be more than the 0.18 allowed. And those two kind of come under the same heading under the Dover Amendment. Now, I am not an attorney, but I know we did speak about that when we opened the hearing, some of those dimensional regulations, trying to enact the Dover Amendment in order to ask for those waivers.
So tell, tell us and the public about the maximum building height, 35 feet, two and a half stories, proposed building height is over 36 feet. What is the actual height?
It is, it was just, it was under 37 feet. It was 36, a few inches and 7/8. So it's not 45 feet, but it was a little, it was over the 35 feet.
But under 37?
But under 37.
And that's based on the calculation of the average?
Correct.
Okay. And then the next one, the floor area ratio, it says to be more than .18. What is it?
That's a moving target. In a campus scenario such as this, where you have multiple buildings, multiple areas, multiple campuses on either side of the road, I do not have that number calculated. And so when you look at this project itself, again, Fussin O'Neill brought it up in their review letter, that it appears it's over the .18. We have a multiple acre, 30-acre campus with multiple buildings. I don't have the calculation.
Will you?
We can.
You know, if it's .19, like with the 37 feet, or if it's .81, the board should know that before we grant the waiver. Any questions on those? Next?
May I?
Yes.
So maybe you can educate me on the Dover Amendment as to how it applies here?
I'll do my best. Like I said, I'm not an attorney. But from what I understand, the Dover Amendment has to do with educational, religious facilities, and how it pertains to the zoning code.
Right. But my understanding of it is, it's absolutely critical to the institution that, you know, that this happened. So maybe, literally, I need to know how it applies to your application here. And I know what the Dover Amendment is.
Okay.
In concept, I don't understand how it applies here.
Well, it applies that, and the rub is always, the Dover Amendment states reasonable zoning controls. In my experience, the reasonable zoning controls had to do with dimensional regulations. If you, if a campus type of facility needed an offset from a front yard or a side yard, those were the reasonable zoning controls that would typically vary. Some of the process information is still followed, meaning we're here in front of site plan review, we ask for special permit requests, and things of that nature from a process standpoint. Religious, educational facilities, I don't say that they have to be 45 feet tall, but it's typically more than a residential type of project. And so where you're held to two and a half stories of 35 feet, such as in a residential zone like this, those are those quote-unquote reasonable zoning controls that we typically ask for. It's a classroom, it's a dormitory building, the massing is such that we needed to go above that height. And again, I'm sure if there was an attorney here, he could do that a heck of a lot more eloquent than I could, but that's the gist of it. It's a Dover Amendment type of scenario, where for educational, religious, nonprofit situations, they can ask for this.
I mean, I still don't understand how it's absolutely critical to the institution. That's, you know, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong about my understanding what the Dover Amendment is and what it's for, but I don't, I still don't see how it applies here, so.
In the original discussion of the application, when it was first started, St. Mark's School described that it was absolutely critical to move the students from west campus to the core of campus, so the students were not crossing the road, to do that in a way that doesn't affect the fields and the parking and in...
Well, I get, yep, that makes sense, but why does the building height have to be?
Because of all the other aspects on campus and connected to campus, that we can't reduce the amount of parking, we can't reduce the athletic fields, we can't take away from the academic space. It requires the building to have a density and a relationship to the existing cluster to be in scale with it for the view shed, for, for the actual uses within the buildings, for the other uses that fulfill campus, in the location that does not require students to cross the road. That's kind of how, from a master plan standpoint, there was a master plan process before Brian and I were even involved, and that's, that's what, there were studies to look at different places, and this was the place that it needed to be to serve all of the aspects of the institution. Did I summarize that? Okay.
Yeah, there are, we need three stories, otherwise the building...
Right. Did that answer your question? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Before we get any further, we want you to know that anytime we have these discussions about waivers, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to make sure that we all understand them, and that there's no misunderstanding, and that we have enough details to make an informed decision. The informed decision will not be tonight, and that you don't hear the board object to or agree to any of these doesn't necessarily mean that they've been approved, or that we will approve them, or that we will approve them. So we're going to, just want to make sure that it's clear that by us going through these, the reaction of the board, we practice our poker faces, but sometimes it doesn't work. So we just want to make sure that it's, it's clear that we're going over these things to learn and understand. And then it'll, at an appropriate time, when this information is locked down, and the reasons for the waivers either are the same or changed, then, and you ask us to vote, then we will.
And I do hope the board understands where we're coming from. We just wanted some type of input as we go down these to see whether it's something that we need to look more into, or it's something that, I won't say is always done by the board or, you know, seen as a, as a, not a big issue type of thing. So we were just looking for some input from the board as we kind of move along the process, so.
Right. We understand that in order for you to finalize the design, you have to, you have to know the answer to some of these. If you're at that point, then tell us. If you're not, then we'll wait till you are.
Thank you for that. Would it help if we answered that question specifically in writing, in detail, about the constraints relative to, so that, you know, the borders...
It would for me, at least, because, you know, I don't, I just, and I'm not saying this is what you're doing, but...
Right.
The Dover Amendment could be potentially overused.
Right.
And I, I would hate to think that I blindly just said, oh, if St. Mark's says it's the Dover Amendment, it must be okay.
Right.
It's really not what I'm about as a planning board member, so.
So we could actually answer that and articulate what Andrew did a great job of, which is the constraints around the sides of the building, which led to why the height, the average height is a little higher than the 35.5, and put that in writing, and I think that would actually help, if that sounds good?
Thanks, yeah.
And we could do the same...
You have, you have three references to the Dover Amendment that I see.
We could do the same thing for the FAR. I mean, we have, we actually have 200 acres, not, not 30, but we have, we had 260, now we're 200, right? So the, we can do the FAR as well, calculate that and find out, and then the third reference, we can, we can answer that as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just to touch on it briefly, which is the next, which would be the third one, again, from Section 174.10, site plan approval, I had to do with the loading area. Section requires that a loading area must be shown on the plans. There is no loading area proposed. All the loading happens at the main building, just to the other side of the East Gallery entrance is a loading dock, everything comes into there currently, and the facilities guys or the, St. Mark's staff brings the humanities and the whatnot to the building. So there is no loading dock, and there is no loading space. We did touch on, and I think Andrew touched on briefly during one of the hearings, that the path that you see to the, to the south of the building is, is wide enough to allow for that drop-off during, during the beginning of school. Parents can drop their students off with some of their belongings, and they can get into the front of the building, and then can kind of continue on. Typically, that would not be used as a vehicular path, but it can be used as that loading space or unloading space during those drop-off pickup times.
Yeah, if I could, if I could add, maybe we didn't need to reference the Dover Amendment. It's, it's really the type of building being a dormitory that we just wouldn't have a loading dock for, for a building like this, with or without the Dover Amendment, so.
Good deal. Okay. The next one is from Section 174.12, which is the Parking and Loading Regulations, part of Major Site Plan Review. From Section 174-12C2, each parking space of at least nine and a half feet wide by 18 feet long, and drive aisles should not be less than 22 feet wide. We are asking for a waiver to allow nine-foot-wide parking areas rather than the nine and a half. We do have 22-foot aisles, and the reason for that is to match what's there now. An existing parking lot has nine-foot-wide spaces, we're just looking to match that. Provides a little less parking, I mean, a little less impervious area, which we're trying to reduce all the time. And I think if, if it weren't waived, we'd end up losing a couple of spaces, but we think it's consistent with what's on campus now. I don't know if you want me to pause at each one, just to kind of...
No. When we go through these, I'm going to ask, after we go through them, I'm going to ask the board if any of them, if any of us want to act on the...
Okay, great. The next one from Section 174-12D is really just a basic iteration of the loading dock and the loading space from before, it just happens to be in two areas in your zoning code. And it does say, you know, proposed buildings with floor areas between 15,001 and 50,000 square feet, one loading space shall be provided. Again, it couples with the one, the previous one. The next one, which is the first one on the second page, has to do with your lid zoning or your lower impact development zoning. And there's a section in there, Section 174-13.3J2, which pretty much states the planning board may require a cash performance guarantee when these facilities are being constructed. We asked for a waiver from that. St. Mark's is a, to having to post that, the performance guarantee. They're financially stable, they're a well-respected member of the community, they do have onsite staff that won't construct these facilities, but they'll certainly take them over and maintain them and operate them. And we feel that's something that, that we could ask for a waiver for. The next one, again, has to do with your lower impact development, your lid under your special permit section. And the next three have to do with some calculations that are in your, that are in your requirements or in your regulations. The first one... your requirements or in your regulations, the first one being a yearly hydrologic budget water balance calculation for pre- imposed development conditions on the site. St. Mark's School is requesting a waiver from having to perform an in-depth geohydraulic study on the site. As part of the, as part of the information gathering, they do have a geotechnical engineer. The geotech engineer went out and did soil borings in and around the site, primarily for engineering information on the soils, bearing capacity and things like that. However, during their, their boring of their exploratory phase, exploratory phase, they did not encounter groundwater at high elevations. The localized spot where this building is being proposed is on a high point. And additionally, our office went out and did some test pits for the, for the drainage. As you know, we need to find, you know, seasonal high groundwater table, or at least explore for seasonal high groundwater table to make sure we have the offsets and whatnot. And so pretty much section three point one-one and three point one-five, these, the three here have to do with trying to avoid having to do a full-blown hydro geo-study on the site. And really, that was it for waivers. What we did also add to the, add to this letter was during the last, I don't know if we've been here two times or three times, and a couple of Fussin' O'Neill comments that they had brought up, we would ask the board for, or let you know, I guess, that we would, we would like some conditions. Obviously, you guys are going to condition the project hopefully in our approval, but there's a couple that we would like to see. We talked about the lack of signage on the plan, and we talked to the board about the fact that St. Mark's has not engaged a sign consultant as of yet, and when they do, we can submit that information to the board, but we ask for a waiver, at least for now, that that information be put off. And the next one has to do with the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or a SWIP. We had discussed with the board the phasing of the projects, the fact that the East Gallery entrance in the visitor parking lot may be constructed next spring into the summer, and then the, the residential building put off until 2021 or 2022. And what we'd asked the board is just to waiver that we know we need a SWIP, and prior to construction, when the contractors have been chosen, we can develop that SWIP. And so really, that's just, we're requesting the board add a condition to that, just to answer Fussin' O'Neill's question, and the fact that we did not have a SWIP in with our information.
Is that SWIP going to be all encompassing? In other words, the SWIP will cover all three factions of the work you're proposing?
The first SWIP will cover the first two phases, the East Gallery entrance and the parking lot, because that's, that's what will be, be exposed and be, and be ripped up, if you want. The following, prior to the residential building being constructed, we will file another SWIP. Different contractors, if there is a year between the two projects, we can potentially close the first SWIP out before we open up a second SWIP. Now, again, if this board or even the Conservation Commission did not like that approach and they wanted an all-encompassing SWIP, we can certainly do that. It's just be a matter of putting in the sequences and, and for each individual portion of the project.
It's my experience, and I'm not sure how Conservation has responded to you with that request, but typically, the state does not, the DEP doesn't really allow for phased SWIPs like that.
Yep. So this, it's not really a DEP issue, it's an EPA issue, and they really, they do frown upon segmentation, they really do, but in this particular case, we're going to have different contractors. Again, we could develop one SWIP and have each individual contractor sign on to the SWIP. It just seems to be a little bit easier paperwork to say to the contractor, you have this one, we can get that one closed out, and then when the bigger project starts, here's one. But again, it's kind of six in one, half dozen in the other. We can certainly formulate a SWIP for the whole project and turn that in.
Did Conservation have an opinion on that?
Uh, I don't believe so, and I know they haven't closed their hearing yet, so I don't want to put any words in their mouth, but I don't believe they did. That, that's, that's really the letter. It was, it was those waivers that we pulled out, again, out of Fussin' O'Neill's initial comments, and as we were kind of going through the project, saw that those were some of the needs that we would like to ask for.
So, is it okay, is the, is the board in favor of giving opinions, if, if any of these, if any of us have an opinion now, or desire now to vote to grant or deny, is it okay if we discuss that, or do you want to just move on to the next thing?
Personally, Mr. Chairman, on principle and how we handle other projects and everything, I'd like to see the entire plan complete before we vote on anything for, as it comes to waivers. I think it would be a bad policy if we started voting on waivers before we see, see a completed plan. Not that I'm opposed to any of these, but just on principle alone, that's where I personally would stand.
Mr. Stein, opinion?
Well, given that we don't have the actual.
No, it's a general question.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want to have this discussion?
Well, I guess then my short answer is we don't have enough information yet to vote on the waivers, in my opinion.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I would agree with the other board members. I just have a question on, in the past, I know St. Mark's has been before us for other projects, have we, have they posted a performance guarantee in the past?
No.
No.
That's correct. The most recent project was the solar panels. There was, there was no performance, and I think even for the STEM building, and maybe even the fine arts building.
Did we waive the lid on that? I don't remember.
I know, I, I don't think so, but as far as.
On the last project that came before us, which was that solar.
I believe that was only major site plan.
Oh, that's right.
Was that all, Mrs. Luttrell?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Holahan?
I think just general discussion, I'm in favor with the other board members that we kind of wait to, on principle, but I just had a question on, the question on the lid. So with the site plan, so stormwater affects not only the property that St. Mark sits on, but also the surrounding community, so I just, I do have a concern there personally around a lid waiver.
So, I'm glad we got the opinion of the other four members. I was in favor of moving, moving ahead if you needed this at this time, which would have to do with the parking space size. We just recently had a site plan that requested something similar. And on the performance, on performance guarantee, because we hadn't done those before for St. Mark's. And then going back to the, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, this is part of, there's two items here, one is the signage, the lack of signage, which goes to a question that Town Planner and I discussed last week, but the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, I agree with Karina that you should submit it for all three phases.
Okay.
It has, it's not specific to that item, it's, it's, it's very, I, I'm trying to think of a site plan that the planning board approved with some open ends.
Yep, and I, and I hope I didn't misspeak, we would certainly submit one, we're not asking for the waiver to not have a SWIP present when construction starts.
No, but you mentioned the third phase, and we, I believe that the board should have the whole, the whole, all of the information.
All-encompassing SWIP, okay, yep. I just wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak, we're not asking to not submit a SWIP, it was just when and the timing of it, so, yep.
The concern, now, this is relative, this is more specific to the signage, is, again, we get a, the planning board gets a site plan, the site plan has to be complete, site plan has to be what you plan to build.
And so I guess.
What you will build.
And we will build it, correct.
So, if there's open ends, like, well, we're not sure how many signs, or where we're going to put the signs, we don't do that. So, Karina and I discussed, and invite your input relative to the signs, if it just has to do with hiring a sign guy, well, what's, what's the problem? But if it's connected to some other linear thing that you don't know the answer to yet, or there's something else in motion that would then, let's say you have a sign committee, and you're going to have signs with no lion, or you're going to have all the signs with a lion on it, or the blue and white, or the white and blue. If, if you have some type of thing in motion that prevents you at this time, for example, with the signs, tell us. Otherwise, really, the site plan approval has to cover all the requirements, one way or another, whether it's on the plan or we've agreed to not require it, so that when, when you leave here with your approval, it covers everything, covers what's going to be built. There may be some cases where we've had conditions where we didn't know exactly, for example, if, if the proponents said, well, you know, we're waiting for some information on handicap, so we're not sure if this sidewalk's going to be five feet or seven feet. So the condition would be, based on the handicap requirement, which is still being developed, there will be a sidewalk, here it is on the plan, and it'll either be five feet or seven feet. And then when you get that information, you would come back, inform the board, and submit a revised plan that would either show the five feet or the seven feet as an as-built. Those type of things are relatively minor.
Let me, Brian. So I assume what you all want to see is only exterior signage, you don't care about within the building or within the building, just, just the exterior.
Exterior. Unless you plan to have classrooms outside.
We do have one.
So what we can do is actually hire a sign consultant, and to your point, we did have a committee that was looking at signage, and we were trying to use this as an opportunity to update some wayfinding signage throughout the whole campus, so making sure that we are looking at different spaces and updating old signs, to your exact point of branding is important for us and marketing, making sure everything is consistent, but in terms of this project, we absolutely can't hire a signage consultant and have that become part of this, so that you guys see exactly what we're planning to do and approving what we're planning to do. So, we just talked quickly and said, we'll do it, so we'll make it happen.
And if I may miss it here, just one response to Mrs. Holahan, I just want to point out the fact that we're not asking to waive the entire lid. We do have our, our stormwater network, our stormwater system meets and exceeds DEP standards entirely, it meets the, it meets the Town of South Rose standards, we're just asking for a, the waiver to that one section of the in-depth geo-hydro report, I just want to, I think that's important to point out, we're not asking to just, you know, skip all the stormwater regulations, there's quite a bit of information on there, we tried to incorporate as much of the lid techniques that in your zoning code calls for, bioretention area, there are recharge areas, there are swales, we've tried to try to get as many of those in, on the site that was responsible, and so I just wanted to point that out, that we're certainly not looking to whitewash the lid regulations at all, so, thank you.
If I could add on the hydro geologic study, if, if that is going to be required, that takes some time and effort, so we would like to get an indication, if we could, as to whether we need to do it, we'd rather not wait until the very end of this, then find out we need to do it. That, that's the one, we would like to get some kind of indication, if we could.
Well, you heard the board, you're probably not going to get that tonight, and when do we come back?
November eighteenth.
November eighteenth, and earlier, at the very beginning of the hearing tonight, you indicated that more materials were coming in, so maybe the board will consider, will think about it, and you can ask us at that meeting, you know, to try to decide, with that and any others, as we, as we go along. I want to make sure that you, the planning board knows this, because we listen to what you say, that you still have the information that you're gathering and plan to submit, which then requires us to extend the public hearing. We're very mindful of how long it takes the planning board to go from the beginning, the opening of the first public hearing until the vote. We keep track of that, and we want to make sure that we don't unnecessarily extend the time that it takes to get a site plan approval. And consistently, the reason that these hearings are continued is because the proponent either has a lack of information and has to go get it, conflicting information, or they're just uncertain, and they're kind of designing it as we go along. That's not the case, I don't see that as the case here.
Now, because we're reacting to some of the, some of the information that the peer reviewer brought up, and just trying to make sure that we answer all their questions as well, as well as yours, yeah.
And this is the part where, you know, we're working together, we're going down the timeline together, and, you know, it's a mutual extension, I mean, we, there's certainly another place we'd rather be here, be on this Monday night in about a half hour, but, so these, it's not, it's not a thing that we like to do as far as continuing the hearings, but we want to make sure that it's a give and take, and, and keep track of the reasons why we have to continue to the next, to the next meeting, and, and, you know, it's clear we're all on the same page on that one. So, all right, we've gone through the, the waiver letter, and I think the board is, and the public is a lot more informed now about where you are with these. You're going to submit a separate letter regarding the applicability of the Dover Amendment. That was something that you volunteered to do, to accommodate Mr. Stein and the rest of the board. So let's, did you, was the next step to go through the plan?
Oh, we, we wanted to talk about the road, parking.
Yeah, something, we would like the board, something important, at least to think about. One of the comments from Fussin' O'Neill had to do with the Egress driveway coming out onto School Street, and they referenced section one seventy-four, I'm not going to have it right here, but it's, it's under Egress, and their question was whether this driveway is going to carry two hundred vehicle trips per day or more, because if it does, it is up to certain standards. And what we were trying to avoid, again, would be to having to do an entire traffic study, just to figure whether this one driveway was going to carry two hundred vehicle trips per day, and it's not that we're trying to avoid having to pay a traffic consultant. And it's not that we're trying to avoid having to pay a traffic consultant, it's just, this isn't a very, it, it just doesn't fit into the box. It's a, it's a, it's a campus scenario. We have, most of the students live on campus, they do not drive. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know how to open up the I T E manual. I was going to come, you know, loaded for bear with some information. And there's literally one study done out somewhere in the Midwest on boarding schools, and it just didn't even fit. So to come up with exactly how many vehicle trips this driveway was going to do is no easy task. However, and this is the part that I would like the board to understand, that even if we did trip that 200 vehicle trips per day, if it were 205 vehicle trips per day, we do meet the criteria in your zoning code. And the criteria has to do with unobstructed site distance, and the distances between other, not adjoining driveways, but driveways on the roadway. And it's basically buckled down into two scenarios, on Route 9, which of course went on on Route 9, so that doesn't pertain to us, and it literally says all other locations. Site distance needs to be a minimum of 200 feet. We have that. The driveway centerline separation from other driveways, serving that 200 vehicle trip plus, is 100 feet. We don't have another driveway within 100 feet that meets that criteria. The only other driveways that may meet that would be the, the other egress, the existing egress on School Street to St. Mark's, over near the treatment plant. It may be that the driveway for the solar field, but I certainly didn't, wouldn't think that they'd get 200 vehicle trips per day going in and out of a solar field. And so, again, just trying to cross all our Ts and dot our Is, Fussin' O'Neill brought that up. We just didn't want to wait, again, as the chairman pointed out, kind of to the last minute, to say, well, this one may not have been quite answered. So we would like the board to think about that as well.
What's next?
Can I?
Mr. Bush.
So I'm glad you talked about the parking. And I know I asked this once before, but how many spots are there in the new lot?
We're adding, there's a net of thirty, forty-six, right.
Forty-six.
Because it adds the visitor parking, yes.
And the number of apartments for faculty in the building?
Be twenty-four spaces for the 12 units.
Twelve units?
So it's still twelve units. So you still have double, almost?
Eleven of those spaces belong also to the visitor lot?
I'm taking by the building.
Need a microphone.
The forty-six are the total number of net spaces. So we have eleven of the forty-sixes here, so that brings us down to thirty-five. And then you take twenty-four off of that, which are the assigned units for the faculty units. So there are nine additional spaces over here that are unassigned.
So, and my concern remains just the traffic on School Street in general. I mean, what, what if you, instead of having all those spots pointing east and west, you had the east side ones go parallel to the road? And you could actually cut down some pavement, since you don't necessarily need that many spots, at least for faculty. My other concern was that if, if there was a lot of extra parking over there, that day students, or whoever, would start using that on a regular basis, and more traffic would be on School Street, then you got the daycare there and everything. Just something to consider.
So we've talked a lot about this internally as well, about how the flow should work, and kind of who would, would be where. The, the general goal, this goes back to the wayfinding conversation a minute ago, is to move a lot of the, the flow and the day students and the drop-off to the Marlboro roadside, and to reduce that flow on the School Street side. There's a lot of flow that cuts through and dumps out on the School Street, or they come in off School Street and dump out the other direction. So we want this to be almost all internal, people coming in, parking, part of the school, then leaving. So there's not a lot of that increased flow, in and out, in and out, in and out, that it's, they come in, or they live here, and they're only going out on weekends or occasionally. The, the extra spaces along here were really more for backup for events and such, which currently have some impacts on School Street with people overflow parking. And the goal was to get as many spaces as we could to try and reduce some of the flow concerns on the, on the narrow aspect of, of School Street. Trying to keep that parking up on campus and not impacting any of the public way. So that, that's been, that's been our thought process and our discussions about, about that. And that also is follow-up about proper wayfinding, and sending people to the right places, and following through, and making sure that parents are dropping off in the right place, and, and so on. But that, that, that has been the discussion that we've been having, and the intent of, of the plan.
And how many day students do you have at the school?
It's about, one second, off the top of your head. About 25% of our 364 kids, so, need an accountant to do that math. But it's, it's 25% of our students, and so we have essentially those students actually parking. Those students actually park.
There we go.
These students actually park up here, and they all have numbered lots, spaces. So they're actually, if you drive here on a typical day, excuse me, these spaces are empty, because really there are no, there are no students parking here. We manage that. So that the students are all parking in the student lot, which is all numbered, and they each have spaces here, up here on, right off Route 85. Right across from that West Camp, right, just past, just north of the West Campus entrance, that right turn that takes you into the gym and the hockey rink, is the student lot. So just to answer your question that was earlier. Yeah, so that.
Staying on School Street, I drove by the other day too, looking at it, and I appreciate you're going to replace the apple trees and everything, but what about the wall? The wall's like overgrown, fallen down, the stone wall that runs along there? What's, what's the plan with that? Because.
The goal is to keep the wall in general. We do, all of the scrub brush and overgrowth is actually part of the plan to take that out, and that's actually one of the meadows we talked about earlier. One of the native meadows we're putting in is actually from the top of that wall up to the parking lot, where the orchard trees are. So all that overgrown invasive kind of scrub that's in there, with the like two or three dying older apple trees, that all would be coming out to be put in as the, the native meadow.
And the wall would be restored?
Yeah, I mean.
And I say restored to like what it would have originally looked like?
Yes.
It'd be a dry wall, wouldn't be like concrete. You're going to use the rounded stones that are there? It's not going to be?
The intent is actually just to do as little as possible to rebuild the wall to the way it looks as you go up and down the street. So our intent is not to rip that wall out and build a wall that looks nothing like anything else along School Street. It's more like, let's put the stones back up, and so they're not falling over, and actually make it look like the rest of the street. So it's not, we're not at, we're looking for this edge to look as much like it may have looked 30 years ago, without the scrub, with the orchard, with the meadow, with the wall that looks like the rest of School Street.
Because I'm, I would anticipate that would be one of the contingencies going forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Should I keep going on the plan? Okay. So with, in the plans we recently submitted, we relocated the parking lot. It's now 24 feet off the chapel. We've reworked the grading and everything to keep the wall low, so the wall, so the camera can see me too, the wall will be this high at its maximum height, to help hide the car headlights. And it will taper to each side, so taper going this way, and taper going that way. We plan this to be pavers, and all respectful material-wise of the chapel itself. The chapel will have some plantings around it, and stand on its own from the parking lot. So that's basically the perspective that we showed you before, is what the plan now shows. The other updates we did really don't change the plan. There are a lot of species switch outs. So we went to gobotany as recommended, and we followed gobotany instead of some of the, what the nurseries call certain native species, or certain regionally native species, and took out the majority of those, except for three conditions. One was the orchard, just because it's the orchard. The second one was for the elm tree, to make sure it was Dutch elm resistant, so it's a Dutch elm resistant cultivar. And then select locations where we have foundation plantings along student rooms, specifically on the, kind of the existing landscape side of campus. So we're kind of toothing into the existing landscape, which has more non-natives than, than the natives. So where we're touching, we do have some, we have a very small handful of non-natives that are naturalized for flowering times, which are specifically related to graduation and other marketing events. So they're specific to these locations, which are hydrangea paniculata and lilac. I think there's like 10 or 15 of those plants total. Then the rest of the, the shrubs that are in use are actually cultivars that are dwarf versions, so we don't have shrubs growing into bedroom windows, from a safety standpoint. All the other plants have been removed, and replaced with straight natives. If we move more towards more straight natives, which we've talked about, and as you heard Sanders talk to Freddie, there are other locations on campus that we're looking to follow through, and Sandra and I have already talked about, as we go around campus, anywhere we can do straight natives, we're heading that way. Our biggest constraint right here are the bedroom windows, and the existing landscape we're trying to tie into and respect.
Is that it?
Yeah. I was waiting for some comments.
You should do that. You should just move on to the next thing.
Okay.
We had our chance, oh. So are we at, have we covered all of the information that we wanted to cover tonight?
We did, thank you.
So I think the takeaways are that there's still some more homework and submittals to be done. The, the, the project will, I'm sure will, will have conditions. We'd like to have those conditions, you know, finite and well-defined, so that there's, there's very little open ends, if, if any. And so that when, when the board votes and approves the project, there's a set of plans and do, and other documents that, that's what you're going to build. That's it. Everyone knows what's going to happen, no surprises. Anything else, Karina?
No, I think that's it. I've, I, I guess you'd be making a submission hopefully, hopefully sooner than later, only because if we want Fussin' O'Neill to do the final review.
So the, we will get it to you as soon as we can.
Yes.
You know, however, there are some moving parts that, so we're kind of waiting for some other information. And so as soon as we get that, we can wrap up our calc. So we will keep you posted as to, you know, we know the, the time constraint that you need to get to Fussin' O'Neill, and such is the way, and so we will keep you informed as to whether, you know, when you're going to get that information.
Okay, just trying to help you expedite it like you want. But I know a big project like this takes time.
Correct.
Did you say November 18th would be the next meeting?
November 18th is the next meeting, and following that is December 2nd. And then there was one December 16th.
What we'd like to do is, is hopefully we can keep on track for that November 18th meeting, just to keep things moving along smoothly. But we will let you know if there's a, yeah. If, if there's a glitch in that, we will let you know. And we can ask to be continued to the December 2nd meeting, but.
Yeah, just let us know, so we can plan for it too.
Correct, oh absolutely right. No, we'll give you plenty of time so that.
And you have been already, you've been telling me ahead of time what's coming, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One second, we're just looking at the, at the dates.
So the dates, I think we continued it until we matched it up with the Conservation Commission, which is November 19th, I believe. I could be wrong, but.
What we have is that the extension, the prior extension was to November 18th, which was going to enable you to be at that meeting. So if someone's going to be at that meeting to request an extension at that point, otherwise we would have to do an extension, you'd have to request one this evening.
I think if it's, if it's okay with the board, we're going to certainly try our best to get the information in to be here, to, to present it. If for some reason that doesn't happen, somebody from the project team will be here to request an extension. I'd like to tell you, you know, definitively one way, but it's a little bit out of my hands, so.
What we try to do is make sure that we're not locked in with zero days of flexibility. Especially now that, I mean, it's hopefully unlikely, but we could have a snowstorm on November 17th or the 18th, and, and then be, you know, kind of behind it. So normally what we would do is.
I can get one.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
Yep. Is, have you request an extension at least to the Friday after that Monday? And then if you feel that you wanted to go beyond that, so we don't have to keep doing this, you could request an extension to a day after Thanksgiving, some point in early December. You want to take a minute and see how long you want to request the extension for. But it's going to be, should be at least four days after the Monday. So it would be.
Did you say December 2nd was that next meeting?
Yes.
Maybe go to December 6th? That's what I'm here?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
I have, I have questions.
Sure, yeah, and I'm sorry.
We move along.
Kind of just slid into that, but go ahead. Mrs. Latrell?
So the, the natives are better, but I show, the trees are pretty good. I show eight of the 17 species of the shrubs are native, and three of the nine species of perennials. And I'd just like to emphasize that the use of non-natives is cumulative, and the reason is an environmental reason, and we've had a horrific impact on our insect population, our bird population, so.
We actually went on gobotany, and the only perennial that is non-native per gobotany is the cultivar that is shown as the kobold, the liatris kobold. All the others are listed as natives.
To, to New England?
Yes, on gobotany. They're in the green category on gobotany.
Because I looked them all up on gobotany, and there were some that were like south-central United States, like Pennsylvania and south, New York.
Which ones?
So southeastern United States was the bottle brush buckeye. New York and south was the hydrangea. The rhododendrum was around here, Vermont, New York, but not New England. The lilac you already discussed. The blue star was south-central United States. The blue false indigo was Pennsylvania and south. Same with the creeping floss, and the moss flocks, and the black-eyed susan.
All right. I mean, okay. That's not how I was reading it, but we'll, we'll go back and look again. I mean, all of the, most of the majority of these are actually in the wildflower meadow, meadow mixes from the New England wetland plants. So we're actually using the same perennials, for the most part, that are in the wildflower mixes. So I, I, I think single sourcing is, is a dangerous thing, in, at least in, in my background. I'm more than happy to go back through again. I, I don't know if gobotany is the only resource for determining native or non-native. I think that, that makes it, we'll go back and look again, but I mean, we might as well just spray meadow seed everywhere, because that's pretty much what we can do, if, if we do that. So if that's what the board wants us to do, we'll go back and look at, look at them again. I do agree that some of the shrubs are what you are talking about, and the majority of those are for safety concerns or for particular events that are critical, that the school has the campus looking correct, which are graduation and return to school. which are graduation and return to school. So those are, that's why, the only reason why those plants were included. So again, we'll go back and look again, but it's an incredibly restrictive standard.
We've done a lot of damage to our environment, and we need to try and fix it or do the best we can, one step at a time. I would also ask that a planting note be made, that all plant material shall be the species specified. Any changes shall be approved by the landscape architect and the town planner. We've done that on all the other landscape plans. Our bylaw asks that plant material not be staked unless absolutely necessary. Is it absolutely necessary to show staking in the?
That's the guy, the guy, the guy of the trees, we agree with you. That's more for buying it out and making sure that it's not a sudden change if we have weather coming in and they need to be staked until the weather passes. We're happy to have a condition or we can take them off the plan and come back to the board if we need them for a weather event. We just don't like to do that because if there's a weather event and the board's not meeting, then we could have issues of trees blowing over. But we concur that it's not something we like to do outright.
Okay. My next question is on the development impact statement. Number 45 seems to be incomplete. It says the walkway system to the front or west side of the new residence hall shall incorporate so.
I'm looking at that. Fill in the blank? No, I apologize if I cut off.
That's okay. So that's number 45. And then my last question, what lid techniques are being utilized?
What's that?
Lid techniques?
Lid. We have grass whale and rain gardens.
Okay.
Both related to the parking and vehicular flow on the east side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My request was just as you are furnishing that letter for Mr. Stein. On the lid, the section 311, talking about the hydrologic budget, the seasonal profile of groundwater elevation and the recharge analysis, you state that you've had a consultant work. Can you formalize that consultant's perspective versus just capturing it here in two paragraphs? So it kind of helps us understand the request for those three waivers? Thank you.
Any more? Anything else? So we'll entertain, so it's your, it's your desire to extend the, to continue the public hearing. Yeah, that's not December 2nd, Karina.
December 6th.
No. The hearing, we're continuing the hearing to a date in November.
Action is supposed to be December 6th. But you want the hearings continued to the 18th.
November 18th.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just put it, take me two seconds.
Yep.
Is that time appropriate, 7:05 and 7:10?
That works for me.
Because sometimes we have a master plan update quickly.
That's perfect. Separate item. What day is the Groton game?
The 9th. We believe it's the 9th. That's right. We're gonna, we're gonna double check that, though. We should know at the top of our head.
Is it home or away?
It's home.
It's home, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
I actually went to the game last year in Groton and wasn't pretty.
Uh-oh.
But they tried. They really tried.
Home field advantage, yeah. You never get it when you're watching it. You never get it when everyone's watching.
It's okay. The delay is on our part. We're just.
Killing time.
So it's your request that we extend the approval period to December 6th, which is four days after the planning board meeting after the next one, which would be December 2nd. But we will also entertain a vote tonight to continue this hearing to November 18th. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the public hearing for St. Mark's School site plan approval.
It's okay.
25 Marlborough Road. And extend the public hearing for special permit lower impact development at St. Mark's School, 25 Marlborough Road to a time of, or a date of December 6, 2019, as requested by the applicant.
Second. I'm not sure if that was right. I thought I heard hearing. The December 6th is the approval period.
For the approval period. That's what I meant. I misspoke. Want me to read it again?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we extend the approval period for St. Mark's School for both the site plan and the special permit lower impact development for 25 Marlborough Road to continue until December 6, 2019, as requested by the applicant.
Very good. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so the approval period now goes to December 6th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for St. Mark's School major site plan approval to November 18th at 7:05 p.m. And continue the special permit lower impact development for St. Mark's School, 25 Marlborough Road to 7:10 p.m. on November 18th.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on November 18th. Thank you. November 9th. Yeah, maybe we'll see you then. So we need to have this request signed.
I was very impressed by you.
Yes. So we're on, we're 10 or 12 with Valley Forge, and it's perfect. Looks actually like now.
Hopefully we don't end up there again. You gotta try, though. You don't wanna lose those forever.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Proposed revisions to the public safety building slash golf course driveway. Karina, did you want to talk about this one first or me first?
Either way, whatever you prefer. I can talk a little bit about it.
Okay. Then why don't I?
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll do, I received a phone call from Jason on the Public Safety Committee, Public Safety Building Committee, indicating to me that there was a desire to change the driveway configuration into the public safety and the golf course from what we approved. And he agreed to and arranged for a revised drawing to be submitted. We got that on Friday, I think. And we would then ask the town planner to look and see if it's considered a minor revision and not have to open up a public hearing as a modification to an approved site plan. And also, I think you usually huddle with the building inspector on these type of things. So what we have in front of us, and it's on the website, is, and on the screen is four sheets that show the revisions. And I'll, I, I informed the town planner of this news, and from that point, she's handled it. Karina?
Yes. I corresponded with Jason Malinowski today, chairman of the Public Safety Building Committee. He apologized that he couldn't be here this evening because of work-related requirements. But he did submit plans. He followed up with the building commissioner as well and the public works department. I have two emails here that indicate that the building commissioner did not feel that there was anything from her end that would stop this proposed revisions. And also, the DPW director indicated that she staked out the proposed changes of the driveway crossover opening at the public safety building so that people could go out and see and the boards could see what is gonna be changed there. There was some confusion with the way the driveway was configured. So the plan is to make one way, there's two lanes there, like a barrel entrance. One, and both are both directions. It's going to be changed so that, consistent with typical driving process, one way will be in and the left side will be out. And in order to keep things circulating there, there're going to be specific curb cuts made so that traffic from either direction can cut across and get to the parking area or come in and take a left, leave, take a right out of the parking lot. So a much more typical configuration. Do you have anything else you want me to add?
Why don't you go to that fourth or the third sheet?
C2-1?
Yeah.
C2-1.
C2-1. That kind of shows it relative to the whole driveway as opposed to what you just had up there.
Yeah. So here's, on the bottom of the screen, you see Corderville Road, Route 85. And currently, both of these lanes are two direction. One for emergency vehicle on the right and one for school access and regular traffic visits to the public safety building. What will happen is this median strip will be cut out so that now the right-hand side will become the in ingress. And you can make a left-hand turn into the parking. You can go up to the police department side. And if you're going to exit, you can take an immediate right out of the parking lot here. The fire trucks will exit. I believe they're gonna cut through here and go down. Yeah. Police department traffic will also be able to access through here as well as through the, I believe there's another entrance back here. Is there? Yeah. No, no, that goes to the golf course. But here is access as well. So basically, one way in, one way out. Oh, yes, and one way to the school in this direction here. That's another egress.
So Karina, do you?
I just got these plans the other day, so.
Do you, do you feel that this is a minor change? Or does it rise to the level of having to, a modification to an approved site plan?
Well, with a cursory look, you would think that most likely it's minor. What I would like to avoid is, you know, frankly, you know, just looking at it now. The building commissioner's on board with it. I believe the DPW's on board with it. From a planning sense, a little more information would be helpful as to what each traffic pattern is. But it certainly, I think, will be better than what is there now, and it will be safer. So in order to expedite, it's probably best to move forward. The bylaw says that if you move a roadway 10 feet or you change landscaping and such. So you're not really moving the roadway here. You're cutting the median out to provide more access, so.
Open up to the board. Mrs. O'Leary.
So, Tim, one of our faithful attendees to our meetings mentioned two planning board meetings ago that there's no public access from a pedestrian to our public safety building. So is that something that could be contemplated through that median strip to make that into more of a sidewalk? Or this is just literally a median cut and we would leave the access only to cars, vehicular traffic?
In my opinion, I think that you wouldn't use that median for a sidewalk in any instance because now you're causing pedestrians to cross over, emergency lane, whatever you have there. I think that it's important to address the sidewalk issues there, and there are various scenarios. And Mr. Litt actually came into my office this afternoon or this morning, and we were discussing, you know, different scenarios for sidewalk. And that's kind of open-ended because there are, like I said, several different scenarios that could happen there, specifically between the public safety building and the school along 85 versus anything beyond to the south, right? So I think it's important to have access, but you have to have feasible access. It has to be continuous and it has to lead, go from somewhere to somewhere else. But people, you know, it needs to be accessible. People who do walk there should be able to get there.
Okay, so what I hear from you is that you are still kind of addressing that, but for this immediate need, that this makes sense not to open up any revisions? Or for major site plan replacements?
That's correct. It's really not on the agenda to talk about. I mean, we could talk about it a little bit, but we're being asked to decide if this is a minor revision or a major revision. If we decide that it's a modification, rises to the level of a modification to an approved site plan, then we have to notify the committee. And then they would fill out the application form. There'd be a. And then they would fill out the application form, there'd be a public hearing advertised, and then we'd open up a public hearing, which would take three or four weeks, easily. Or, which is fine if that's the case, but if we feel that this is a minor revision, then we have to decide that, we should decide that tonight, and then inform Jason that that's our, that's our decision, and then they can, they can press on. So that's our job tonight, is decide whether this is a minor or a modification. Any, I'm, I'm still working on the board here, Tim, so any, any other questions or comments?
So is there any reduction in the landscaping? Or is that the only thing they're doing is that curb cut?
I'll have to look at the landscape plan itself, let me just take a quick peek, I don't have that here. But I think that would be minimal, and I think they could probably make up for anything they change there cause it's not a huge area that's being changed. And physically, it's a small change to the site, you know, physically, it's a small change.
Okay. So just to, to be clear, if, if we deem it's a minor and doesn't rise to the modification for a major site plan, it would have to be approved by the site plan review committee, and then the building inspector could approve a minor departure based on approval of the site plan review committee, according to our bylaw.
I know where you're reading that, but I think it's my understanding that we don't have opinion yet on minor site plan review committee, or on the site plan review committee. So it would come back here to planning board because of the question as to non-residents voting on a committee.
So, okay, so then, then it would be, then it would have to come to the planning board? If we don't have a site plan review committee, then everything would come to the planning board?
That is correct.
I guess that's the answer to that question, I guess.
That is correct. The way, the way it was up until, I don't know, nineteen ninety, everything came through the planning board. Everything came to the elected officials. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Stein?
So if this is just the change that's being submitted here and there's no other changes, to me, this is, does not rise to the level of a, of a major modification. And I don't have any problem with allowing it without a formal hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I agree, I would, Mr. Stein, I would not view this as a major modification. It would be a minor adjustment. And I would actually suggest, Karina, that the, the width should be wider. Just when they, looking at perspective with cars, police coming around, making that turn, you wouldn't want them swinging way out the other way. So take that, I would suggest they make it bigger.
Are you saying larger than the thirty-foot cut?
Yep. Yes. Specifically on the east side, closest to the building. Because when the police come around from their back parking lot, they're gonna have to swing way out into the incoming traffic to get around that little nub. See what I'm saying?
I do say, see what you're saying, and, and my thought would be to avoid doing something twice. So from an engineer, I'm, you know, I'm gonna take my planner's hat off right now and say, from an engineering perspective, it would be important for them to show maybe the turning movements of the trucks that are supposed to use this access road now to leave the site. Because you're coming from, you're, you have, you know, ladder trucks that will have to come down straight. If it's my understanding, and they're going to be taking that route down to Cordville, can that turn be made? And, you know, I think the suggestion of widening that cut is a good one. I think it's not wise to just say, okay, do this, but not show that it works.
Oh, no, I agree, you said it was gonna come back to us, but I'm just saying, you might as well look at it now that, you know, from a practical standpoint.
Yeah.
I agree, both on the standpoint of the fire truck, the ladder truck going out, it's probably gonna hit, if you're trying to do a straight line, you're gonna hit either the, the eastmost or this west one, depending on how you go through it. So it should be, I think it should be widened before they even, even comes before us, that's all. But yeah, you gotta show the turning radius, and we're not at the point to ask if the, what the fire chief thinks of the turning radius.
I was informed that both the fire and police chiefs were okay with this. But I think we'll all remember that when this original site plan came before the board, there was pretty much zero likability of the driveway by the board. I mean, the board, I think, clearly stated that it was a lousy design. And, but it, it, you know, the, the comments were that that's the way the fire and, and, and police wanted it. We have a new fire chief now, police, current police chief apparently has looked at, and it's easier to, you know, it's, it's easier now that it's built to see what, what else could work. So it would seem, I mean, this is actually the second revision to that island. The original, down at Route eighty-five, the original curbing went right down to the edge of the pavement. That's been removed and pushed back about probably twenty feet. And I think it's shown on, on sheet C two one, that gray area at the bottom. Curbing used to go all the way down to the edge of the road. Now it's, it stops at the edge of that gray, that gray, and then there's the sign. So that was just, that was done. And then we've also heard comments that, you know, the sign is, it's a great-looking sign, but you can't see it because of the guardrail that was put up, and also because of the growth approaching that sign. So it would seem to me that this is somewhat of a work in progress. Have to make sure that it works for every single fire and police call, and that the apparatus and the vehicles can come and go, and the golfers can have full access. That's right, and the school buses will be rolling through here. So we're being asked a simple question, is this minor, or does it rise to the level of a modification? And from what I'm hearing, at least the three of us here, is, is that the way you, you feel also, Mrs. Houlihan? It's minor, and Mrs. Latrell?
Well.
Minor revision, not minor site plan review, minor revision. It doesn't rise to the level of a modification.
Well, my reading of the bylaw, there are two ways to change a site plan. Either a minor through the, the site plan review committee, or the modification has to come back before the planning board.
But the first thing you mentioned doesn't exist anymore.
Correct.
So it's back to the planning board?
Right.
There's no other, the, the planning board decides whether it's minor or not.
Okay.
But I think that, that distinction, if we say it's major, then we have to notify everyone, we have to have a public hearing.
Have a hearing, okay, yeah.
Where a minor, we wouldn't have to have a public.
And so, and often they get picked up in the as-built, the, some of these, these changes like this.
Yeah, I agree with minor, so long as it comes back here.
We will report then back to Jason that, that the board is fine with the revision, as far as not having to be considered as a modification. We, we, I, I know that you were taking notes that everyone isn't overjoyed with the, with the revised configuration, but hopefully it'll be a work in progress, and over the years, it'll be perfected to improve the public safety response and improve golfers' games. Tim?
Tim, Woodland Road. First, thank you to Mrs. Houlihan for remembering the pedestrian access issue. And just a brief update, I corresponded with Jason about this, and he's agreed to put it on the, the public safety building committee's next agenda. I have, you know, I, I did some research over the weekend and have pictures and thoughts and all that, so maybe we'll get somewhere that way. But anyway, it's not been forgotten, it is being worked.
So if there's future revisions, either to this proposed layout, each will be looked at on their own merits, whether or not they're minor revisions, and press on or not. So we've only been asked to look at this tonight, we've looked at it, we've dealt with it. If there's other revisions, they'll be, they'll be, will be notified and take appropriate action. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion, Chestnut Hill Farm reconstruction of Deerfoot Road barn. We'll ask the town planner to give us the background and the update on this. This is a discussion, it's not a public hearing. So discussion would be someone providing information, and then an ability for the board and the public to ask questions and see where that takes us. Karina?
Several weeks ago, I was talking to the building commissioner and it was kinda brought to my attention that the old barn on Deerfoot Road, that was part of Peter Dowd's property that was A and R'd last, like a year and a half ago, was deconstructed and stored in Vermont or New, New Hampshire. And that Chestnut Hill Farm was going to take that barn and reconstruct it on its property to preserve the barn, and then use it for the farm itself. So DA Hayden and Bob Murray, who are here from the trustees of reservations, who represent Chestnut Hill Farm, had a meeting with me and the building commissioner to go over what that project was. And I felt it was important that they show the planning board what their intention was because there was a question as to whether you had to come to site plan approval or not. And I felt that it should because of the size. The building is, I think, like eighteen hundred and eighty square feet, but there's a patio associated with it, and I can show you more pictures. So the footprint is actually like twenty-two hundred square feet, if I'm not mistaken. I did a quick measurement. So that kinda pushes it to the threshold of site plan review. And also, you know, I felt it was an expansion of use because it wasn't a barn that you were going to use for livestock or such. It was something to ha, hold events at, where you would have bathrooms and some office space. And, you know, events which you had proposed a couple of years ago with a pavilion. And the pavilion didn't really come to fruition, I think because this project started to take hold. And that pavilion was going to come before the planning board. So I felt it was best that you could explain what you were going to do there, and then the planning board could give you an opinion if they think it should come to major site plan. Just to confirm that.
So should I start? So I know you're wearing your poker faces, but we are not wearing poker faces cause we're very excited about this project.
Could you tell us and the public who you are?
Yes, my name is DA Hayden, and I'm the director for the Charles River Valley portfolio of the trustees. So that comprises nineteen properties in the area, Chestnut Hill Farm being one of them. My colleague is Bob Murray, who is the director of structures for the trustees for the entire state. So projects like this fall into his realm of responsibility. Also with me is Mike Francis, who is our stewardship manager for the other, the nineteen properties that I referred to earlier. We, if it's all right, I'd like to just provide a little context as to how we got here. As Karina mentioned, a couple of years ago, we were looking at what we were going to do with the farm and thought of having an engagement pavilion. We looked at that, thought about it, and said, you know, before we do anything, let's field some research with the community and with the, within a five-mile radius of the farm to determine both from a activity and an interest level, if we were indeed going in the right direction. So we fielded both qualitative and quantitative research with people to find out what it was that interested them about the farm and the sorts of things that they were interested in doing there. And what came back to us resoundingly was the fact that people are interested in the open space and the opportunity for that passive recreation. They are extremely interested in where their food comes from. And the whole idea of understanding farming, exposing children to farming, and that whole experience of growing and eating what you produce. Since then, as of just a few weeks ago, the farm has gone completely organic, just so you're aware. What also came through loud and clear in that research was that the community was looking for a gathering space. Somewhere that was very safe, that was open, where there were educational elements involved, and where children could come and run and play and be safe. Parents could sit and enjoy the view, or a farm dinner, or a food opportunity with regard to the things that we grow. So all of that was very validating to us in terms of the kinds of things that we want to do at the farm. And just as that research result presentation concluded, we were approached by the historical society about the barn on Deerfoot Road. And it was as though everything had just come together for us at the same time. And we're not really in the business of rescuing barns. And we saw this and said, wow, this could be absolutely perfect. Because once again, it really maintains the history of the community. It, it will be a place where people can come together, and it fits beautifully in the vernacular of the farm buildings. So that's where we are today. We have met with conservation, we've met with SOF, we've met with SVT, and obviously the historical folks know, know what's going on as well, and then the meetings that Karina referred to. So we're here this evening to share with you what we're proposing, and to look at the sighting, and to answer any questions that you have. And that's pretty much what we're up to.
Very good, thank you. Open it up to the board, Mr. Mills.
Well, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the, I guess I'm not as familiar as the barn itself. It was originally on the site, or no?
No, the barn was originally on Deerfoot Road on the other side of Route nine. It's a late nineteenth-century Dutch-inspired structure, it's a timber-framed barn. And we did, the wrap on the barn was not, could not be saved, but the entire timber-framed structure was taken down piece by piece. And as Karina said, it has gone up to New Hampshire where it's been restored piece by piece so that it can be reassembled on the Chestnut Hill Farm property.
Okay. And so the, the barn is then gonna be used for events such as?
The barn is going to be used for engagement activities. So that would include all the things that we're currently doing at the farm. So I don't know whether you've been perhaps to a farm dinner, or a Brew Moon hike, or some of the educational things that we do for children. But for example, this, the example that I use all the time is that this spring, when it was Mother's Day and we had a farm-to-table brunch for Mother's Day, as you may recall, it was thirty-nine degrees and, and it was blowing like a son of a gun, and people were wearing parkas, and they were great, and they sat under a tent and tried to enjoy their brunch. This would afford us some indoor space to have events like that. It would also afford us some opportunity to do things in the shoulder seasons and in the wintertime. It's, it's a, it would be a three- It's a, it would be a three-season space because we, you know, we can't heat it. But for all of the programming that we do there, it's not, someone said to me, is it a function hall? When we were at one of the meetings, we said, no, it's not a function hall. It is clearly to bring the programming that we're doing now and to have a space where we have public restrooms. You know, people, and the research showed us and, you know, parents of the children who are coming to our programs are saying, you know, there's, you're, we're using a portaloos still. And so it's really, would be a nice upgrade for us and provide a space that's an indoor space for everything that we've been doing.
So, okay, so an indoor space and it would be specifically, so not for like private functions? Not to be rented out?
Not to be rented out, no. We're looking at expanding what we are currently doing so that we may have more farm dinners. We will have more education opportunities for children.
So no plans to possibly turn it into a brewery or anything like that? I only ask because my parents live next to a farm and it now is a brewery. So you can do a lot with a big farm building.
Yeah, no, no, we won't.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Stein?
So there's also a proposed leaching system?
Yes, a new septic system for the bathrooms.
Okay. What about parking?
So we have two existing parking lots, as you may be aware of, one by the trail.
I have been to the farm dinners.
Oh, good.
And full disclosure, my, my wife regularly gets the produce as a part of the CSA, so.
Oh, great.
I don't think that rises to a level of a conflict of interest, in my opinion, but I'll leave that up to the board.
Is the food any good?
It's excellent.
Then there's no conflict.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, so it is, it is sort of likely, full disclosure, that I would, you know, I would be there myself. But having said that, that'll get you no favors from me. As far as the, you know, are we, are we looking at whether or not this rises to the level of like a major site plan review or? That I would, I would assume that's part of your, your purpose in being here is to.
We're looking for direction.
Get it, get it, get the temperature of the board. I mean, to me, this does. This, this will impact, it's an increase in use, it's a change in septic. And I think it would probably benefit the proponent to go through that process and cover all your bases in terms of parking, access, et cetera. That's my opinion right now, anyway.
Mrs. Luttrell?
But I'm open to discussion on it.
Could I respond?
Sure.
Just to give a broader sense of the scope of work, so we are looking at the historic barn itself, which is about twelve-hundred square feet, and then a lean-to addition that would go on to the side of it, about six-hundred square feet, that would have the bathrooms. There is the septic system, but we're also looking at taking the opportunity to remove two buildings on site. An old two shed that is in poor condition and the old goat barn, which is also in poor condition. And so in addition to those two buildings, which account for about fifteen-hundred square feet, we're also looking at removing the asphalt in front of the CSA to create more of a courtyard space between the two buildings. But that would further reduce the impervious surfaces by another thousand square feet. So we think it's going to be fairly close to a net neutral or even slight reduction in impervious surfaces.
Okay, but it's probably going to, I mean, this, I don't, I don't say how that's neutral in terms of the amount of people that'll be coming to the site.
Correct, correct.
That's, that's, this, this will cause an increase, which I assume is part of the reason why you need to change in your septic. So it's, I mean, to me, that's not really net neutral.
Okay.
In terms of use.
Yeah, not, not use, I meant in, in terms of impervious surfaces.
Fair enough, but were you going in the direction of saying that therefore we, you wouldn't need a major site plan?
No, I'm just trying to explain the overall scope, that's all.
I think maybe what you may be alluding to is maybe a waiver for the lid requirement. Because if you don't meet the threshold, you may not need a special permit, depending on how much you do, because major site plans typically require a special permit for lid, but there are some exemptions to that. So you were talking the drainage aspect? Okay.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Thank you. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm also a CSA member. But it'll not affect, will not bias me at all. And I try to remain poker-faced, but this is kind of exciting. So just to be clear, that this is in the building envelope of the CR. This property has a CR. I would agree with Mr. Stein that this would rise to the level of major site plan because it's a change of use and because the town has great interest in this property. And if a big building all of a sudden goes up and nobody knows what it is, people will be very concerned. But I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Thank you. Really excited as well. I think it's amazing that you guys can restore a barn and build it back on Chestnut Hill. The farm has been a great part of our community, so I applaud the effort. I agree with my fellow board members, though I do think it's a major site plan submission because of the, the use, especially with restrooms versus the portaloos, which are existing now, I think, just to ensure that we do this the right way and to, again, protect our environment as much as we can, which is our, you know, our job here at Planning Board. So I'm very excited for the project, look forward to the site plan.
Thank you.
So it's five, five to zero as far as we want you to come in under major site plan review. Bob, you mentioned taking down some buildings. Karina, can you put up, oh, okay, that's up. Can you point to the ones you want to tear down? No, she'll do it for you.
Okay. Just to the left of that, this, this small, small equipment shed there. Then the other one is part of the original barn, which is behind the greenhouse, which unfortunately is off of this, it's over there. So it's an old stone foundation that had engineer trusses go over to create a new roof, but it's in very bad condition at this point and not worth for. So that would be number nine.
Scroll down.
Here.
Yep.
So this is the tool shed right here?
Milk cooling tanks were when it was an active dairy barn. So it was a low-grade room to keep it cool.
Milk cooling barn. Okay, so is that part of this project?
We were hoping to take advantage of, you know, equipment on site to do it as cost-effective as possible.
So when you, that's, that's fine. I think as a matter of fact, if you said no, I would have said, well, you should maybe make, if that's what you plan to do, make it part of the site plan so that the board can, and you can get approval for all of these actions. The construction of the, of the barn and then the removal of the, the other buildings and then the reconfiguration of the pavement and so on. So that the board, you and the neighbors get the full picture. So that's what we, again, this is a discussion item. I happened to go by the, your little tent at Heritage Day and entered into a discussion, which I thought was, it's, it's beyond, it's down the road, but actually is the road. The concept of closing the road at the end of, by your house, Whit, by the parking lot, closing the road to regular traffic. It would still be available for emergency vehicles. And then that portion of the primitive road would then become a pedestrian way. And I was told that there's quite a bit of foot traffic going up and down that part of the road because it's just so beautiful, the pastures, the walls, the beautiful trees. So that's outside of this board's jurisdiction. It's an existing public way. It would be the Board of Selectmen. And of course, public safety would have to tune in. But I don't know if you would consider that. And it may be either part of this or handled completely separately. But I think it's, it's worth a good look. And I don't know how the neighbors would react. You know, most of your neighbors live closer to Main Street. So how often they would, or how inconvenient it would be for them to not go straight out to the railroad bridge or have, have to go around. But the, the concept of, of turning that road into a pedestrian way is kind of unique for, for South Row. But everything you're doing out there is, it's not unique because it wasn't that long ago, there were farms in town with actual barns with cows and hay and tractors and stuff like that. So it's, and I think everyone is feeling great about this coming, you know, this land being used to, to go back to that type of operation. I'm glad the questions were asked about the, the use. And it seems to me that the biggest concern or the, the, the tightest part of this proposal would be to clearly define the use and limit it to what you expect to use it for. Question was asked, you're going to rent it out? No. Is it for functions? No. Other than your own? I'm not sure if you're familiar, there's a similar property in Groton. It's called Gibbet Hill. And there's an old dairy barn with the silo still intact. It's now a restaurant.
I'm going tomorrow night, actually.
All right. And then next to it, I think, was the hay barn. And that's the function hall. And there's weddings, weddings, all kinds of functions there in addition to the regular restaurant. So looking at these glass doors, it would, I was blinking and saying, is that a bride posing for a picture there? So the neighbors or, and, and the town should know if, to the, to what extent it would be used and the type of use. You know, you're going to have acoustic music or you're going to have, you know, acid rock blasting from the building as part of educating the children. Those type of things.
Sure. And just to be clear, we're still in the schematic state right now and we're actually going through some value engineering, looking at those windows and in terms of our constrained budget. So the ultimate, the footprint will probably remain the same, but the penetration and so forth is still subject to some adjustments.
Sure. And that's, that's, the appearance of the building, the windows, the exterior view of the, of the building, the roof, that's, that's part of site plan.
Yep.
What goes on inside as far as how you, you know, you know, construct the inside is, is beyond our jurisdiction. Anything else on the board? Anything from the public? You all set?
Talk to us a little bit about timing.
Typically, applications need to have a lead time of about three and a half weeks to make it to the planning board because it has to be publicly advertised two weeks prior and then the third week is the actual meeting. We provide you with a notice and you send out the butters' notifications. You'll have, we'll give you the form to fill out and that same notice gets put into the newspaper. We put it in the newspaper, but you're, you're, you pay for that. You can get in a butters' list from the assessors for a minimal fee. Once you submit that application, I check it to make sure it's complete. Takes about three days at the most. Then we file it with the town clerk, start the gears rolling and schedule you for the next planning board meeting. But it's about a three-and-a-half-week timeframe. And when you're ready, you can let me know and we can take a quick look at your application set to make sure it's all set before you actually, and then it'll go faster.
Great. Thank you.
We have, we have had submittals for site plan and they were incomplete or had conflicting information. And the town planner reviews them and if they, they, if they're not complete, she hands them back to you. So if it's, if it's a rush job or if it's, if it's not a complete package, that three-and-a-half weeks could, could grow.
Yeah.
Because the clock doesn't start ticking until the town planner takes, takes the plan to the town clerk to be stamped. Right?
That's fine, good.
Great.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Enjoy your vegetables. You know, someone else made the reservation, so I just am arriving, so, yeah.
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion hearing on all in favor, we'll see you in two minutes.
Okay, we're back in session after two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is another discussion item. It's 5G small cell policy. We'll ask the town planner to give us the update on this discussion item.
Several months ago, actually last fall, Heidi Davis, who's a resident in town, had approached the Board of Selectmen previously and other boards and committees to promulgate a way to have some regulations for when the whole 5G small cell technology starts to come into And from Heidi Davis's perspective, she is hoping to slow that down, if not totally negate it. But the federal government has passed laws that, as a public utility, there's some things you cannot stop. So the Board of Selectmen worked with an attorney, and the name of the attorney is failing me right now. It's not Copeland and Page, but they asked the law firm to provide some draft policy as opposed to changing bylaw or adding to the bylaw because policy in this instant is supposedly more, you can do more to control what happens in your town through policy. So what I provided to the planning board were three documents that the attorney had provided. And I do have her name, it's free. No, it's not on there. The first one is a draft grant of location regulation document. And it's intended to encompass both the small wireless facility installations as well as all utility installations, which the Board of Selectmen has traditionally approved through Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, Grant of Location Process. The attorney structured the regulation this way to ensure that utility installations and small wireless facilities are being treated equally for purpose of aesthetic regulation as required by the FCC. The second document that the law firm provided was a draft design criteria. And I have a note here, "Not incorporated into the regulation, but are a separate document that is referenced in the Grant of Location Regulation. The intent would be to provide applications with the best practice set of design criteria and then require specific explanation or justification for an exemption in the event an applicant feels they cannot meet the requirements." Say somebody like Verizon is the applicant because they'll come into town and they want to place these antennas at certain spaces along different places in town. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, Tim, you might know, but I think you need fiber to run these, to run 5G. So you have to have fiber installed. But let me just get to the third point. And the third document you have is a draft right-of-way lease agreement template that can be used in connection with the licensing of all utility installations and small wireless facilities. This would allow the town to collect the maximum amount permitted under the FCC order on an annual basis. I want to also point out that Heidi Davis was provided these documents as well through Mark Purple's office. And she emailed me this afternoon at about 4:30, having had a chance to look at them. She apologizes, she's also under the weather, so she couldn't get here tonight.
Can you actually hear it?
Oh, you are? Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see. There you are.
You don't have much of a voice.
Okay, there you are, okay. Well, Heidi provided these, I didn't recognize you with your hair back too, I'm sorry, an email. And I don't have it in your pack, but I can pass it out here so that you can have a chance to look at it. So let me take these. Along with this email, Heidi Davis attached several documents. These are all posted on the planning board Dropbox. I haven't had a chance to post them on the website if that's needed. But again, you haven't had a chance to look at this. So we have these draft policy documents as templates. And the goal is that the planning board gives some feedback to the Board of Selectmen so that the Board of Selectmen can talk about it at one of their upcoming meetings in order to take this the next step with some finalizing the policy for them. So they've asked various boards to opine and give feedback on these template documents provided. It's a little bit rough reading because it's not, you know, everyday information that we're used to reading.
Rougher than site plan?
Well, it depends on what your specialty is. Some people might find this easier to comprehend. So that's where we are.
So when do they need feedback by?
They are going to see what planning board says and they were hoping one of their next couple of meetings. They didn't give me a definitive date, but we want to just keep the ball rolling so that we can, so that the Board of Selectmen can follow through and get the policy done. It's a lot of information, so I'm not sure that it's something you can provide feedback tonight. I almost want to say if we do it one more meeting and you have a chance to digest some of this information, I don't know to what level you were able to review the documents and understand them.
Okay. So with the Selectmen one in the next couple of meetings or the next couple of meetings of the planning board, they wanted the?
No, they thought that you might have had a chance to look at the information, discuss it this evening, and then provide me some feedback in order to respond to them, like, we feel this is great, we feel this is not so good, and here's why. We suggest maybe adding this and this and this, or leave it as good, finalize it. But like I said, it's a very specific technology.
Just a quick question, what would our process be for doing something like that? So I am not fully prepared. I mean, I think there are some things that I would, wholeheartedly would agree with Heidi's review that we should really think about incorporating, but I'm not fully prepared to discuss that. And so what would our process be, our proposed process to be to solicit that input? The next meeting is obviously in a full month. Could we individually send our feedback or?
Yes, we've done that in the past where if you send your feedback to me, then I'll put it all together and say, here's what was discussed and what was thought. And I can even say, you know, Marney Houlihan gave these comments, Amy Luchel gave these comments, you know, Andy had these two comments, Jesse was fine, you know, Dawn had no opinion, something like that.
I do think there's a sense of urgency here to be able to kind of put in some guidance and policy, so I would like to try to be as expeditious as possible. So if that's the best process and then maybe discuss it at the next meeting, but you'll have advanced feedback. Is there a timeline that we should maybe set for ourselves?
The sooner the better. It's up to you when you can respond to me. If you can respond by Friday, that's great. I'll draft a letter on Monday. If, you know, it's all a matter of when you can get back to me. I want to point out one more thing. I received two emails today from residents. If you'd like me to read them, they're regarding the discussion item tonight to the planning board.
What I don't see in front of the board is specific zoning questions, which to me would be our role in, well, we've done this before with things like medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, solar arrays. We, you know, effectively create zoning guidelines for land use relative to things that people may or may not want around. And this to me falls very much in that category for aesthetics, for the reasons that Heidi pointed out. This to me would be something that we would consider doing, an overlay district in, you know, the industrial part of town, for example, and, and, you know, create zoning that would address this issue. I'm not really understanding why we're taking this approach.
Well, if you recall, we had a discussion item on this last fall or maybe earlier than that. And it was determined that the Board of Selectmen would be the Board of Jurisdiction over what happens because this is a town-wide impact. These 5G small cells are, can be placed anywhere, neighborhoods.
But by, when you say they can be placed anywhere, are you saying that literally some, some utility company can, has the right to place them?
Yes.
Anywhere they want?
Not, and I can't say anywhere they want, but they have a right to come into town and the, there is a whole FCC law that was already passed as a public utility that they can install these, but the local towns cannot. But they can be regulated only to a certain extent in certain things. So what happened is that the Board of Selectmen approached, asked an attorney to give them help with this. And it was determined that a bylaw was not the most effective way for the town to have more local say, that a policy was a better approach. And this was about a year ago. And so what happened is they asked the, the law firm to, Heidi, do you remember the name of the law firm? That's, it's KT, KP, KP, that's it. Yeah. To develop a policy based on, because they, they have information on other towns that have used similar policy and it was much more, it's going, it's supposedly more effective. So the path for a bylaw was discussed last year already. You know, I know what you're saying. You're saying we should have like amend the wireless section of the bylaw. And we talked about all that and at the time, and I still believe it's, and Heidi was there as well, that a policy was more effective for local control.
So is there, is there like a town council opinion that speaks to this someplace?
Not yet. I don't believe yet.
Because it, I just, it doesn't sound right to me that the Board of Selectmen would come up with this idea without town council. The dots aren't being connected for me, anyway. Do you understand this, Mr. Warrens?
Well, part of this was, a little back in the history was when the 5G first was presented as a concern, the needle was pointed at the planning board to do something about it. And so Karina, myself, I forget who else was there, Mark Purple, we sat, we had a meeting and my concern was that even though I didn't really know what 5G was, it was a whole new program that was being, you know, the planning board was being looked at to address. And my concern was that it's another huge workload for the planning board and we don't have the resources to research it and do anything about it. So, and it also seemed that because the nature of this technology and the actual physical gizmos that are used in 5G are usually attached to telephone poles up and down public roads. And to me, that's not our jurisdiction, that's Selectmen. So we leaned on Mark Purple and said, you know, if this is being, if the appropriate place for this is the planning department, then we got to know it so that we can adjust our budget and adjust our resources and our priorities to, to do it right. Or to have it sent in another direction and have somebody else pick up on it rather than having us just say, well, it's not ours, so have a nice day. And then nobody does it. So fortunately, and as usual, the town administrator looked at it and he agreed that the best place for this, at least at that time, was in the Selectmen's jurisdiction and that this should not be a planning board responsibility. So, and I think it had a lot to do with the fact that this affects every neighborhood in town, not, not just different zones. It doesn't matter what zone you're in. It's not really a zoning issue. It's throughout the whole town. And the actual physical instruments or equipment is on public ways. It's in every neigh, it could be in every neighborhood, public and private, but, so that's, that's why it went to the Selectmen. And then I believe Mark tasked the Technology Committee to research it and get back. And once again, and I think we reported this at a meeting about a year ago, that sure enough, the town administrator asked the Technology Committee to do something in a certain period of time and they did it. And as a result of that was the recommendation for the policy. Because their research, they're the ones that took the time, looked into it, see how other communities were dealing with it and how. And I think that's one of the reasons that research led us, or led the Selectmen to the law office that then drafted the five, potential 5G policy. That's my understanding of how we got where we are now.
Thanks.
So I'll.
Fill in the gaps.
I'll try and fill in some of this. The reason that it didn't go directly to ALDO is that this is a specialty area of law. And just like town council uses. And just like town council uses labor council for issues in that area, in this area, they wanted someone who was up to date on what was going on in this area, had the expertise, knows what other towns were doing. So it's not going around town council, it was going through town council to get the legal expertise. And then to answer Karina's question from twenty minutes ago, these cells would be interconnected. It may be by fiber. It can also be, the backhaul, which is what it's called, can also be done via microwave and, and other communication technologies. But basically, the towers by themselves don't do anything because they have to talk to the network at large and also pass calls off among, among the towers. So those were just the two bits of detail. And the last thing is, I guess I'll say that the, it is the case that the FCC has put in some rather, some would say obnoxious rules that basically say zoning doesn't matter, local choice doesn't matter. The technology is, is good for you and you will, you will take it. And what you're left with is regulating the aesthetics. And it may surprise Ms. Davis, but I actually agree that we should regulate the aesthetics.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just can't believe that we have no zoning control over the placement of these things. I, I can't even, I can't accept it.
You saw.
It's federal law superseding state law and local law. I mean, that's just the way it is.
Jesse, you sound like I did about 25 years ago when they were putting up cell towers. And, what was it, longer than that? And I sat here and said, if, if we don't want those cell towers, we're not, they're not allowed. That's it. The next meeting, there were three lawyers sitting out here and explained to the board and myself, basically what Tim just said. The, the airways are, are free. Federal law prevents local, local control. It was, it seemed hard to believe, but that's, that's the way it is.
May I make a comment? This is Heidi Davis. Mr. Stein, I just, I'm willing to share more resources. I'm sure you're all not interested in that. However, I do have one that was just published in Scientific American, which really breaks down the issue. And I'm not sure if I've shared any background information with you in particular. So I'm happy to do that in addition to what I have shared. But my voice is not going to last. So I want to say that my points, which you probably haven't had time to consider, are well-founded and all the basis is within it. So if you have further questions after you have a chance to review it, please reach out. And I'm happy to share.
Thank you.
As much as can help, be helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on, on this? Yes, Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you, Heidi. There's a lot of good information here. I've been trying to do my Evelyn Wood speed reading here, trying to take it all in. But the email from Mark says that the selectmen will have it on their agenda late November or December. Does that give us another meeting to digest this and discuss it again?
November 18th and December 2nd. So when I spoke with Mark, you know, I said, we want to have this as a discussion item because we want to have some movement on this. And he said, well, I, you know, I, I want to go through, I want planning board to give some feedback first and then we'll schedule a Board of Selectmen's meeting so I can have some additional information. So they meet pretty regularly. Board of Selectmen almost every week meet, if I'm not mistaken. I see their agenda all the time. Every two weeks, that's it, every two weeks. So I, I, you know, and, and if, if they need to do something special, they meet very quickly for that, too. So, but November 18th, I have to look at their agenda. It's on my wall to see when their next meeting is. Maybe, Sam, do you know?
No, no, but generally every two weeks. We just got the, the handout, the legal material today, yesterday, so.
So restate that, what he just said.
Yes. You said the Board of Selectmen just received the legal information and they meet every two weeks, so roughly. I want to just point out that whenever I receive update emails from Heidi Davis, I immediately forward them to the planning board members so they have a chance to look at that information. And Heidi knows it's a lot of information, but we try to, I just keep trying to educate. Now, I don't, haven't had a chance to read all of it, but I pull out some of the more important ones. And I'd like to point out that if you go through your documents and if, if you want me to, I can post them on the Dropbox in one spot. So we have all this together. But I would look through for the FCC ruling is a very important one to read because it really spells out how much control that, that gives the federal government over the local jurisdiction and restricts what you can do. And it's part of the reason why I believe we, the Board of Selectmen opted to go with a specialty attorney, like Tim said, who has experience in this, who opine that a policy as opposed to a bylaw change was a much more effective way, based on their experience. So look for the FCC documents and then the sample policies. I think that, I, I have one that you sent in this past email from.
Burlington, Massachusetts.
Burlington.
Important one, I think.
Yeah.
Local, and they've done some things that we should really look to do.
And there was one, another one in Western Mass, Pittsfield or something like that. Focus on those first if you have limited time because that's where a lot of good information is to understand what's going on with this. Because it's huge, but it's coming and.
The FCC document is quite lengthy.
Yeah.
Restate that.
So if I can share this other brief overview, it links to the summary. And it, you know, the problem is a lot of it is links.
Okay.
Try to provide the primary sources when I can.
Right. So as Heidi was saying, the FCC document is really onerous. But in her emails, she always provides links that I pass on to you. When you click on those links, it gives you other information that talks about it without having to read all the legal mumbo jumbo that's in the actual law or the cases.
Some of the preamble in these other policies and ordinances, like in Burlington, I think it summarizes the FCC streamlining order in the initial preamble of the policy.
So the preamble, if, if you're going to keep speaking to this, you're welcome, but you're going to need a microphone.
You got to come up.
But you, you just stated that the preamble summarizes.
Just up to these, in the policies that I've shared, so it may give you a quick background.
I want to, I, I want to go back if you were all set.
I am.
Mimi, I would suggest not waiting for a meeting to, as soon as you can, as soon as we can go through it and provide our comments to the town planner, we should do that. Because our meetings are too long. We get into, sometimes we get into far more detail than we need to. And we can have it as a brief discussion item at every meeting if we want. But as far as going over the comments, I think it's best to just submit them. It's a homework.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on 5G?
Just point out, we, Michelle Pierce and Andre Fortin had provided comment letters based on this topic, which I will forward to you in the Dropbox. Oh, they are in the package? Okay, all right. Oh, they're in the, yes, I put them there today. Okay, losing my mind.
Thanks a lot, Heidi, and thanks for coming, even though you don't feel well.
Thank you for your time and your insight.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the discussion, the planning board budget. In front of us is a draft, clearly state's draft on the top of next year's budget. And it shows a moderate, modest increase, part of which is the salaries and wages, which is always our biggest line item. So unless people have questions, go ahead, Mr. Mills.
So I, I guess I'm just curious, the bump up that happened in budgeted for 2020 versus the actual for 2019, is that because we're minus the support staff?
Yes, if you notice at top, it says actual. So what happens is the treasurer's office, once, so right now, we're in fiscal year 2020. So we call that the budget one. 2021 is requested. The prior year, they got the real numbers.
Okay.
And that's what's reflected there. So we had a vacancy for four months.
So, but, but that helps me then with all the actuals for the other years because that's the interim, too, when we've been.
Yeah. So actuals is actuals.
It wasn't computing with me when I was looking at it. It looks like a big jump. But that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mrs. Luttrell?
So I see $2,500 here for master plan, for MAPC. That will take us through visioning and then we'll have to do the master plan. We need to go to town meeting for a specific line item to, for, to do the master plan?
Let me explain a couple of things here. So on the third page, what I try to do, there's the standard items. So you have your salaries, office supplies, education, memberships, mileage and such. And in the middle of the page, you'll see color coded. And I'm trying to track, you know, what we've spent in the past and the programs we're trying to keep running. So this is fiscal year 21. So in there, I put in a $2,500 master plan update. If the master plan committee during that year has established their plan but needs printing, you know, several of those, you saw the prior document, it was extremely large. So I thought it would best to just carry something if that committee needs to provide payment for printing services, to have the master plan actually printed. It's not for any actual master planning or support. I didn't have anything in there for that per se this year, for, for the fiscal year 21. We can ask for it. I can adjust it. It's a draft. I'm not sure where we'll be in that timeframe. I have in here $7,000 for continued open space monitoring, which is a reduction from usual. So what I do is at the end of the year, I see if there's remaining funds that haven't been expended because we've saved somewhere else and then apply that to the initiative that needs it prior to the end of the fiscal year. So when we got that grant from MAPC, we had some additional money so that we could do that phase one already. The other thing I want to point out is that this budget is going to be revised to reflect the salary of the new person that we'll be hiring for that year. So this is going to be actually bumped up a little bit more. So I'm trying to balance it without getting too extreme, but also get what we need to keep things moving forward on some of these initiatives, like the master plan and open space inspections. One, two of the things that we're picking up are recording secretary for SHOPC and recording secretary for master plan committee. So I carry $1,800 for each of those, which is in the contracted services as well. So contracted services are actually going up from, you know, 12.8, I'm asking for 16.4. Now, SHOPC may get their own budget. There's a question on which way that's going to go, if planning board's going to continue or to cover that or if SHOPC will get its own budget. So there's still refinement to happen here. But I basically wanted to point out that this is a draft. It's going to be tweaked some more and it's probably going to go up a little bit. I don't know how much we can increase it for master plan effort.
So is the expectation that the committee writes the master plan? Without any professional consulting help?
No, but that, I think that part of the master plan effort right now when working with MAPC is to determine what the next phase is and what that next phase will cost. Because it's very clear, this first phase is the visioning, coming up with the, the goals and such. And I believe when I first talked to MAPC, you know, they know the different phases and what those costs are, and we have samples of those. So we can get an understanding. That may be something we might have to request specifically at town meeting to be allocated. I don't think that that larger phase is something we can just pull out of the budget. Specific, especially because I'm hoping my next assistant is going to be long-term.
Mimi, the last time we did the master plan, it was kind of floating along the same. The last time we did the master plan, it was similar tracking where, you know, you're, you're doing this visioning and then you're going to refine it down into a draft revised master plan. That's the document. And it'll, it'll be, you know, one document. It'll be one copy. And then that's the product that we hired, the consultant, and that your committee has developed. And now what are we going to do with it? Well, it has to go to, you know, proper formatting, professional formatting, professional printing and, you know, software and all that stuff. It's, it's hard to get funding, if not impossible to get funding for that until you have that, that document, until you have that product. And then you can say, then we put it in our budget. And we say, we need 50 grand, we need 30 grand to get this edited, I mean, to get it published and out there as, as our official Town of South Pro master plan. So it's, it, it will be a one-shot slug at whenever those things come together and the product is ready for printing or distribution and voting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on, on the budget?
Are these numbers going to be revised again or are these, what's being submitted? Because fiscal, on page three, fiscal year budgeted 18, but in the blue line, that doesn't total correctly.
Where are you saying?
Right here. 112 plus 80.
No, the 80 plus 49 is, and the 442 is actually 131,000. So I don't.
This third page is my, um, tracking everything and trying to keep everything in order. The official budget is this page. The first page is what the treasurer has and we're not allowed to, these, these columns are locked. We just are allowed to change the yellow one. The other one is me tracking of prior years. So if there's a wrong number there, it's, it, it doesn't reflect over here.
Okay.
See, you see, see how the totals, if you look under 18, it says 113, 316. I don't know why that number is that way. I had everything in order and checked to be actual. But it still says budget on top, so it doesn't say actual there. I'll check that, though.
No, it's okay.
I'll check that.
If that's not, we're not using, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on the budget? Tim?
Just with respect to printing, think electronic distribution, don't think printing. That will be pressure all through the town.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, we're not going to print 1,000 copies. Nobody reads it anyways.
I mean, five copies is probably more what you should be thinking.
Yeah, just for the record to have them in town, not for distribution, like.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the planner's report. Okay, next item on the agenda is the planner's report.
First thing on the list is, I'm happy to say that last week Vanessa Hale, Melissa Danzer, and I interviewed three candidates for the business administrator one to planning position to fill Casey Wolf's spot. And one of the candidates stood out, and they met with Dawn and me and Vanessa individually this morning. And I just want to say, this is a viable candidate. We'd like to make this person an offer, but I just want to say for the record that as information was just determined today at approximately 1:00 PM, that we have a candidate for the business administrator one to planning position. And within the fiscal year '20 budget, we determined that it would work. I recommend that the Planning Board vote to appoint the candidate to the position of business administrator to planning so that an official offer letter can be extended, provided to the candidate. We need that person appointed so that we can give them an offer letter ASAP, because we're trying to get that person on board very quickly. I posted, the Dropbox has the information on the candidate. I can't go into specifics because it's not appropriate at this point, to say too much. But the background is fully qualified. The conditions are such that I am optimistic about longevity, and I think this person would be a tremendous asset. I'm surprised we found someone so quickly that checked off all the boxes. So I don't want to lose this candidate. So I'm hoping that the Board will vote to appoint this candidate based on my recommendation and Dawn's knowledge of having met this person.
So by entertaining a motion to appoint, and if that motion passes, then that opens the door for the offer letter. If the candidate accepts the offer, then there's a background check and a physical. Assuming all of that goes smoothly, then there's a start date that's set. So we want to make sure that we act as quickly as we can. Karina went over this with the town clerk's office, as far as public discussion, which we're having, up to a limit. And also the correctness of taking, making an appointment at this point in the process. And according to town clerk's office, it's all proper. And we've also received feedback from Vanessa that this is the way to go. Mr. Mills? Oh, any questions or comments?
Oh, here, Andy. The second paragraph.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, you spoke with her, and you agree with Karina. She was...
Very much so. Very, very much so. It's hard to believe that all of the attributes of someone to fill that position are in one person. Yeah, very, very much so. And, you know, the only concern is, I guess, the concern that we've had since Hillary left after 19 years is that, and even then, you know, we've had people come and go in that position, and they, for various reasons, they move on. Someone of this quality and qualifications is, you know, someone that we hope would stay and learn and contribute for a long time, but also understanding that, you know, someone of this experience, quality, professionalism, would very easily move up in other positions. But, you know, we had Casey for three months, and it was a great three months. And if we didn't, would, you know, Karina would be not as, not as relaxed as she is now. So this is the way to go, definitely. Mr. Mills?
Well, and Mr. Chairman, you fill, and Karina, you had a large number of applicants to choose from, from the get-go, like applications?
Yes, we use software. We had at least 26 shortlisted to three, and we picked the prime candidate from those three.
Mr. Chairman, I, that we recommend that the Planning Board vote to appoint the candidate to the position of business administrator, administrator to the Planning Board, so that the official offer letter can be extended, provided, provided to the candidate.
Sorry. To the candidate.
To the candidate.
So the motion is for the Board to appoint?
Point.
Business administrator one to planning, yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. All in favor? Five to zero. That appointment has been made.
Thank you.
In the next four minutes, we have the next item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes, September 28th and October 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion when you approve the meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2019, as written.
September 23rd.
23rd.
Oh, sorry, 23rd.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. All in favor? Five to zero. Mr. Mills?
Chairman, I make a motion when you approve the meeting minutes from October 1st, 2019, as written.
Second for discussion?
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Mrs. Luttrell.
Line 27. In, in the quotes, "Major site plan approval in a village business district shall be by special permit."
Any other discussion?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
On abstention, any other discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to, zero to one. Anything else?
One last question, the granite guy. Any word on that or the lights at Ken's sign?
Yes, I have a quick update. Oh, and I also need you to approve that you accept this calendar for next year, that I passed out September 23rd. It was in your packet then? Yep. I can give it to you again, and we can, you can do it for November 18th, but I need it by November 18th because I have to book the rooms, so another person doesn't slip in ahead of me. So if you take one and pass it down, and just let me know.
I make a motion, we approve the meeting, Planning Board meeting times for 2020, as recommended.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Five to zero.
Oh, thank you.
Ken's?
Did you second that, Mr. Stein?
Yes, I did.
Two minutes.
Okay, I just want to answer, Andy. Ken's had a malfunction with the lights. Let me just see what they said here. I did talk to them. And I forwarded you the email. It says, the sign was defected and needed to be repainted and will return to the approved state by the end of this week. That was October 7th by Jim Bourne from Ken's Foods.
It's still wrong.
Okay. So that was two weeks ago, so I will follow up with another email to them.
Anything on the granite guy?
No, nothing yet on that part.
Motion no. 2.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Five to zero. We're adjourned at 9:59.